Okay, I have 6:00 PM. I'm gonna call this June regular board meeting to order. If you please stand with me for a moment, pray.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the day you've given us. For what we ask that you believe and guide this board, give us wisdom. We might go in the way you'd have us. Lord, we thank you for all the wonderful staff and supportive community we have. Lord, we thank you for the students we had the opportunity to educate. Lord, we ask that you look after our community, look after our school system, keep us all safe. And then we again will do all things in your name. All this I ask. Amen.
Let's lead.
This is the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please everybody's had a chance to look over the proposed agenda for this meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Mrs. Penley, do I hear her second?
I second it.
Second by Ms. Youngblood. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed, thank you. Item five, student recognition. Dr. Flatt?
Good evening, everyone. So now we're gonna acknowledge a couple of students and some successes they had academically this year in a couple of different areas. I want to begin by recognizing three students tonight who were accepted into the Duke TIP program, which is the Talent Identification Program. And for those of you who don't know a lot about that, the TIP program is designed to motivate, challenge, and inspire and offer advanced interactive activities for gifted students. Programs include summer residential opportunities as well as weekend and online educational courses that students can take to have a better challenging academic courses put in front of them. Students gain eligibility when scoring at or above the 95th percentile on the state standardized test, and students are then asked to take the SAT or ACT in order to qualify for the various programs offered. So this year, we had three students that qualified for the Duke TIP program, and those are Jenna Gaddis, who was accepted into the online educational program. Caleb Wilson, who was also accepted into the online educational program. And we also had Alexis Reed, who was accepted into the online educational program, as well as received a scholarship to attend summer residential and her ACT score qualified her for state recognition as well. And earlier this semester, we had two students participate in the Northeast Georgia Regional Science and Engineering Fair, where each of these students placed in their respective divisions. One of the students couldn't be with us tonight, but I'm gonna go ahead and recognize her, Rosie Whiticon, whose science experiment was asked for help to people, could it help plants too, which earned a second place finish in the Life Science Division. And also Erin Billings, another seventh grader, who's studying fly high physics and astronomy study, also earned a second place finish. Both students went on to compete at the 71st Georgia Science and Engineering Fair at UGA. Unfortunately, neither of them brought home any major awards, but we're certainly proud of their accomplishments. And I believe Erin is here. Nope, I thought he was gonna be here. Well, we'd like to give each of those students a... Nope, that's not Erin here. Anyway, we'd like to congratulate both of them. Thank you for the hard work of them.
Thank you, Dr. Flatt. Community recognition, Ms. Walker?
Hi. Thank you for allowing me to present some awards to some very worthy community members. As you know, last year, we participated in the REACH program for the first time, and we selected five scholars from our upcoming eighth grade class to become REACH scholars. And if you're not familiar with that program, I'm just gonna tell you just a snippet about it, because we're trying to earn money to fund five more scholars for this year. But the REACH program identifies students who have a financial need, who meet specified criteria from eighth grade all the way through your senior year. And if they meet this criteria that's set forth by the state, then when they graduate, they will receive a minimum of $10,000 to apply toward colleges. Many colleges will match that $10,000, putting them at $20,000. If they qualify for HOPE, we're looking at even more. If they continue to be in a needs-based area, then they will receive the Pell Grant, so they can have as much as $60,000 when they graduate college, or excuse me, graduate high school. So this is a very good program for our students. One thing that this program does is require that we have a mentor assigned to each student. And that's who I want to recognize tonight, because we had three mentors from the community who spent a minimum of eight times with these students per semester. And most of the time, they spent at least 30 minutes at a time. And this was just to offer some support with the students, you know, to talk about things that interest them. I know some did some coloring with the students. They could talk about grades if they wanted to, but that wasn't the reason for this. This was just to encourage these students to stay on a good path. So our members tonight that I want to recognize, Ms. Susan Reeves, a retired educator, if you'll come on up. Have a certificate, and I wanted to give you a picture of all of you guys.
That's why you are all the gift.
So thank you very much. Appreciate that. Right, one of our own, Ms. Dana Burton. Right, and Mr. Will Jackson could not be here tonight, but if you know him, please tell him how thankful we are for his services. He helps out in various ways with our school system, so we're very appreciative, and I'll make sure that he receives this as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker, for all your work with the REACH program. This time, it brings us down to...well, first, I want to say, you're more than welcome to stay for our meeting, but if you're here just for the recognitions, you're more than welcome to leave too, at this time, whichever you prefer. Okay, that brings us down to item seven. Superintendent reports, Dr. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First was our financial report, Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. As we see in that very tiny printout there, we'll review the general fund. Revenue collected through the end of May is 87.07% of our budgeted revenue. I always call your attention to the top line. We're at a little over 96% collection rate. That's actually pretty good for this point in the year. We will continue to collect those property taxes and a few other local taxes for June, July, and August. That will all be back into this school year. So we actually, keep in mind, we do have 2.5% that is withheld at the county, which equates to about $535,000. So you see, there's not much of a gap between what we've received and what is outstanding. What we would hope is maybe we might get that number down below a half million dollars. That would be really nice, which means we have probably collected some back taxes in this county. And we always get back taxes, there are always some things outstanding, but the higher that number goes, that 96.1, we like to see it as high as we can get it before the end of the year. The expenditures at this time are 77.87% of our budgeted expenditures. We're coming to a close when it comes to operating. Over the next few weeks, we'll get those encumbrances, which are outstanding purchase orders taken care of. But remember, we have three large payrolls. June, July, and August will all be booked in June, and that covers all staff. June will cover all staff. July and August, we capture anyone who is not 12 months. So all that gets backed into this year. So don't get too excited that we haven't spent too much money, but we should be in good shape with a positive fund balance at the end of the year. Our capital projects and SPOSS summary. Our SPOSS revenue for the month of May was $483,665.56. We earned interest of $3,977.30, had expenditures totaling $124,155.14. And the month-end SPOSS balance for May was $9,769,236.99. And you can see on our running total there, our 12-month average has increased to almost $435,500 per month. So it is eking up. We like to see that, helps with our SPOSS projects. Just an update, we had Department of Audits with us until yesterday. The audit will continue for a few more weeks. I'll let y'all know when it has been completed, and hopefully they'll set up their exit. They hope to have all that done before the end of July. I hope they have the audit done before the end of June. So we'll keep y'all impressed of what is happening with the audit. So far, so good, everything looks great. So if y'all have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Tennis reports, Ms. Young?
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. I'll start with the staff attendants. Martian April Bove, Tate, was halted. Congratulations. But for the month of May, it looks like new winner is Dickens Junior High School with 96.09%. Student attendance. Oh, last month's winner was Jasper Middle School with 96.09%. Looks like for the month of May, it was Dickens Junior High with 95.31%. If you come back one more time, I'll get your certificate for student attendance. Whatever you were doing last month at work, you had a wall there.
Quite a lot of fun things to do.
Congratulations, awesome job. Moving on to the detailed drop history by month, as we wrap up the school year, there's always a little bump for the month of May due to lack of attendance. Three out of four, we gained four, which brings our grand total, which is not a bad grand total at all. Our grand total dropped by month for the school year was 14, which is an awesome job. Student Services did a tremendous job tracking the data, making the phone calls, sending out the letters, and everything that goes into that. So congratulations to those guys for a job well done. Move on to operations and instruction. Start with maintenance. Of course, summer is always tough on maintenance, it's extremely busy in the summer. Anybody that's familiar with the school system knows that there is a massive amount of painting, there's a lot of remodeling, there's a lot of cleaning, just a lot of general maintenance that goes into getting the schools ready to reopen those doors for those kids when they come back. For maintenance, it's the busiest time of the year. Even Stacy was telling me a couple of days ago, the maintenance staff is doing a tremendous job with the schools, getting them ready. And of course, for all of you that have driven by the junior high school or around to the back of the high school, you know that it's not just general maintenance, there's also some major construction projects that are going on, that are being handled by outside groups, but our guys are still involved in the minutia of moving and things like that. So maintenance has been super busy. Transportation, as I wrap up the year, told you guys about the competition going on in Macon, that Nathan Hamby and Joan Collis were competing in, the State Transportation Technician Competition. Nathan came in not out of 33 competitors, so congratulations to Nathan on a job well done. Like I told you guys before, we've got one of the most qualified group of technicians out at the bus garage of any system in the state, and that makes it possible for us to do a lot of stuff inside that other school systems have to farm out, and it causes a lot of expense for them, but we're able to take care of that. Wish us luck, or wish Stacy and his guys luck. Next driver training classes, July. Hopefully, we will have some candidates come through successfully complete and then stay with us. Of course, the technicians are working on the buses, performing the routine summer maintenance, those kinds of things. We also, during the summers, wash the buses inside and out, spray them with disinfectant mold repellent. It takes a lot of time to do that, it's pretty labor-intensive, but Stacy tells us that it's very beneficial in terms of health, keep those buses as clean and as disinfected as we possibly can. So an awesome job in transportation. A lot of you came to the rodeo that was going on out there, got to see the garage, got to see the buses. We have a, we've got an impressive fleet. It's a great, a great group out there. Food services, speaking of great groups, food services is awesome too. Beth is here somewhere, I saw her a few minutes ago. Here's Beth. Summer meal program is off to a great start, providing meals at four locations this summer, including a mobile site that they're utilizing, the activity bus utilizing it to deliver meals as well. And it's off to a great start. Beth, I'll have some numbers as we get to the end of the summer. And it's always impressive when you see how many students they are able to feed during the summer months. So hats off to Beth for doing that, making that happen for us. That is a great thing. And that concludes my reports, Dr. Wilson.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Mr. Chairman, let's close our reports. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Bring us down to item D, action items. Have two P A Rs need to approve. On the first, personnel action report is recommended by the superintendent. Do I hear any motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. White, do I hear her second? Say by Mr. Smith, any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed, thank you. The second personnel action report is recommended by the superintendent. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve that report.
Motion by Ms. Penley, do I hear her second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. White. Any further discussion? All in favor? Four, any opposed? Any abstained? Four in favor, one abstained. Thank you.
Second action item, approval of the 2019-2020 student code of conduct. I want to thank Dr. Wilson and I believe Ms. Schop in particular worked very hard on the code of conduct. I believe everybody's had a chance to review that. I know Ms. Schop contacted us several months ago to get our feedback, and I think all those were taken into consideration, has a little bit of a new look in design, but I think overall the code of conduct looks good. Do I hear a motion to approve the 2019-2020 student code of conduct?
I make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Young, do I hear her second? Second by Mr. Smith, any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed, thank you. Number three, approval of textbook adoption for PHS and PJ for 2019-2020. You want to comment on that, Dr. Wilson?
Yes, this is some of the textbooks that we need to approve, foreign language, Spanish and French, some agriculture, business, technologies, health services, drama, public safety, culinary arts, and the ELA. These are for some of our classes coming up, and I request that we approve these textbooks. We did have committees that looked at all of them, looked through the process, and vetted them out, and these were our recommendations.
Any questions for her? Do I hear a motion to approve the textbook adoption?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. White, do I hear her second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Penley, any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed, thank you. Action item number four, FY19 budget amendment. Ms. Smith already contacted us on this, but do you want to provide a little information on that for the public, Ms. Smith, please?
Most certainly. At this time of the year, we go through and assess where we are in the budget, if we need to make any amendments, any changes to what we had originally proposed. And we do have a request to, we had some unexpended money in instruction. We have two needs. One is in transportation. We, with the reallocation of schools and changing of the routes, we'd like to reallocate about $100,000 from instruction to transportation to help cover salary and benefits expense. We also, during the course of the year, moved an administrative position from a school to Dover, and we never did the budget amendment for that. Of course, it came through the board and was approved. We hoped we would not have to do an amendment, but we do need to do one at this time. And it's $150,000. So 250 comes from instruction, 150 into improvement and instruction, and 100 into transportation. The overall budget total does not change. So we're doing, we're just shifting money from function code to function code.
Thank you. Any questions? Do I hear a motion to approve the FY19 budget amendment?
I make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Young, do I hear her second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith, any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed, thank you. Action item number five, FY20 recommendation for student meal price. Ms. Thompson, would you care to give us your recommendation?
I thought you were doing so good, I thought I was just gonna...
Well, anytime we're raising prices, I'll default to someone else.
Okay, okay. All right, so yes, my recommendation is a 15 cents across-the-board meal price for lunch for paid students. We haven't had a meal price in two years, and our program is very profitable in terms of that, we have a positive fund balance. And so the last two years, USDA has given us a waiver not to increase our meal price if we have a positive fund balance. However, because we're having less school days next year, and we're also giving our staff a raise, this is a good time to go ahead and try to generate some revenue to cover the additional expenses that we'll have. But I want you to know and feel good about the fact that our meal prices are still right in the middle of the pack and lower than two or three of the counties around us in about the same level. As far as breakfast goes, I'm also recommending a 25 cent increase in breakfast. It's been $1.25 for the paid student. I've been here five years, and in July, it'll be five years, it's been $1.25 the entire time, and we've had to put more food on the plate in that time, but we've never raised the price. And all the neighboring counties, if they charge the students for breakfast, they charge at least $1.50, some are $1.60. So I'm gonna go up to $1.50 to cover the food costs and the labor for that.
And this is also a glitch, because now you've offered at breakfast the Meals on Wheels type of...
Yeah, right, right, right. So, but yeah, and I think we'll see an improvement in participation with that as well. And then the other thing I do want to just kind of like share with everyone is that there is, I'm not just arbitrarily raising meal prices, this is a federal requirement that we have to every year look at our meal price. And there's a regulation called paid lunch, meal, no, it's called paid lunch equity. And basically, what the government wants us to do is to have the paid student lunch price to be the same level that it would be the free reimbursement minus the paid reimbursement, which is about 270 to 280 right now. They want that to be the student's paid price. And so we're gonna be going from $2 to $2.15 for elementary, from $2.25 to whatever, $2.40 for middle and junior high, and then up to $2.45 for the high school. So we're still well below that gap, and we basically have a 10-year timeline to get to that point, which started about 2012 or so. So anyway, we'll see. And I'm hoping it's gonna be a great year next year, and I can go another year without a meal price increase. Would that be of help?
Any questions for her?
Okay, come eat lunch, the more we feed, the better off we are.
Thank you very much. Well, since I made you present, I will make a motion that we...
Okay.
I'll make a motion with your FY20 recommendation for student meal price increase. Do I hear a second? Second by Mr. Smith, any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed, thank you. Guaranteed max, or action item number six, guaranteed maximum pricing for PHS Dover addition. Mr. Young?
You have our copy up here right there, $1.499 million, and this is the guaranteed maximum. We do expect it to come in below this amount, but this is our guaranteed maximum that we were requesting approved for that item. Stacy, do you have anything to add to that?
You know, we originally had a estimated budget of around $2 million. This has come in at $1.499. We've got a big allowance for contingency and allowance in there just for OOs, so it doesn't stop us from finishing the project before school starts. I feel like we'll get a big chunk of that back. We have run into a couple of problems. We had a sewer line that was in the way, we didn't know about, it was on no drawings anywhere. And we had a storm drain, we had a grease tank we had to relocate from one of the, for lack of the word, we had to trap for all that, we had to relocate. So that's only two extras we've seen so far, which are minimal compared to what it could be underground. So we're shooting hard to get this thing in here to, under this price and on time and get our kids in a good safe school.
Can I make any questions?
Well, I will say, as you know, I raised my concerns yesterday, and they did not go away, but I did feel a little better after talking with y'all, and I still think this is a little high. And it would just be my hope in the future that we continue to work with Carol Daniel to make sure we get as competitive prices as possible. And...
Absolutely. Well, this is, this is the guaranteed maximum, so hopefully we'll be well under budget, correct?
We hope so, yes. Without any unforeseen problems, and we're not, now, we're not seeing...
We're pretty well into the project, too.
Well, let me say, as someone who was on the previous board, we did a lot of interviewing and a lot of researching, and Carol Daniel was the best choice for this. And I know Mr. Gillen is very good about keeping costs down. He's very cost-conscious, and I appreciate all your hard work there.
Entertaining motion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. White to approve the guaranteed maximum pricing for PHS Dover addition. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith, any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. Action item number seven, lawn care and maintenance for 2019-2020.
We put bids out. We ran it for 45 days. We had to put on a state municipal website, which is required by law if it's over a certain amount of money. We had a good turnout for lawn maintenance. We had six, six people come out, but only one to...now, we did have six vendors too, so. And it ranked, it was very close. We had one that was well out of range, but the top two were within $300 of each other, and the top three were within like $700 of each other. So I feel good about what we got, we saved some money. We've got a really good company according to all my reference checks. Dr. Wilson and I are recommending seasonal design landscaping at $102,600 a year.
Questions on that?
We would like to say that they do plan on, they have the ability also to come in and cut all the grass on all of our campuses in one day. So, you know, as far as testing and everything else, it really is going to help take care of some of those situations.
Do I hear a motion to approve lawn care and maintenance contract for 2019-2020?
I make the motion.
Motion by Ms. Youngblood, second by Mr. Smith, any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed, thank you. Action item number eight, exterminating pest control for 2019-2020.
This was the same process, and we did have several people in. We had four people turning in bids on this. We had, Dr. Wilson and I, we had a low bid of $725 a month. bids on this. We had, Dr. Wilson and I, we had a low bid of $725 a month. And the company that we had originally been using was 850. And we, I did some research on this other company. They're very capable of doing the job, but the reference checks didn't come back very comforting. We found that they have a lot of extra charges for callbacks. We average about 10 to 13 callbacks a year, and we've never been charged but twice, and that was for a, for a, well, three times. We had termites in this building across here we had to treat. And we had two different years, one time each year to treat for mosquitoes at the football stadium. After heavy rains, mosquitoes are bad. And we've had two treatments for that, like $40 treatment. So we feel like with callback history that I'm gathering from references, that we would still be better off to stay with the one there exterminating, which we've had for three years. And Beth's going to tell us they do a great job for our kitchens and all taste. So I'd say we're recommending.
Any thoughts or questions? Do I hear a motion to approve the exterminating and pest control 2019-2020 contract? Motion by Mr. Smith, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Finley, any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. Action item number nine, garbage and recycle services for 2019-2020. Mr. Gillen?
We had two people show up in one bid, and it's advanced disposal. And it's just hard to beat them in this area. They're, they're, they have the size to handle it and have the landfill. And it's kind of hard to beat them. They did go up about $10,000 on us. But they did think they had competition too, because they, they were really like, the Sanitec didn't bid. When they came in to bring the bid, I said, no, they're not going to. So, but anyway, the reason, I did some checking because I was concerned about them going up that much. And the reason they did go up is there's been a new $2.50 per ton federal charge, charge to all landfills now. So they're passing that straight on to every customer. So that's part of it. And then, you know, cost of living too, things are going up. But I was a little disappointed in that. But we do, these bids are bid on a year-to-year basis, but they can be renewed up to three years if the price doesn't change over 3%. We can negotiate that, we can come back to y'all and recommend them again next year. If, if it looks like it's going to change more than that, I would have, I'd put it back out to bid and would bid the whole project again. But that's the way we've been doing it for years here. And the way I've always done it with this, so we keep familiarity with these people, and we get them in here, and you seem to get better service when you work with them like that. So, but we're recommending an advanced disposal again.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion to approve the garbage and recycle services contract for 2019-2020?
I'll make a motion to approve the garbage and recycle services contract for 2019-2020.
Motion by Ms. Finley, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith, any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed, thank you. Action item 10, approval of ABM service agreement for 2019-2020.
There again, this contract changed about $38,000. And that's because we're adding the new Dover building, and we're taking over the North Star building, which we haven't been doing. That's the only reason it went up. There was no cost of living or anything added to it. That's just the square footages of those two buildings.
Did we solicit any other bids for this?
No. It would be a year-long process to do. It's a renewal of their contract. No, no price change other than what we added square footage once. Now, last year we did negotiate with them, picked up a bunch of extra hands. And I'll, it seems to have gone better. I mean, you got the Brinsels here, you can ask them if it's not a lot better than it was. Seems to be managed a lot better now.
In the future, I think it might be a good idea to at least run some numbers so we have some more options.
Well, we'll have to do a whole bid package and put it out. There's not really any way to just run the numbers. I have to solicit bids from.
And either maybe the officials can run in-house numbers, I'm usually. Well, I can give you those pretty easy, right? Just for the way you're running.
But we've, we've looked at those in the past. One of the reasons that we did contract out was because our enforcement's comp charges were exorbitant.
I'm sure there's reasons behind that, as I say, drivers have been running since three of the war veterans came on. So I think it'd be of good interest to always continue to make sure we're getting as good and competitive pricing as options as possible.
Yeah. It's the same square foot price we were always getting to.
Any other comments or questions? Do I hear a motion to approve the ABM service agreement for 2019-2020?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. White, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Finley, any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed, thank you. Stacy, thank you for your work. Appreciate it. Action item 11, approval of minutes. This is approval of minutes for college war meeting and regular war meeting for May 9th, as well as college war meeting on May 23rd, and college war meeting on May 31st. Believe everybody's had a chance to review these minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Young, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. White, any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed, thank you. Action item number 12, approval of surplus. There's a slew of surplus from, I believe, nearly every school. It's clean out time into the year. I think most of this is books, old broken equipment, all that type of things. Any questions on surplus? Would anyone like to go through that large pack of surplus, though?
No.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve this.
Motion by Ms. Young, do I hear a second? Second by Mr. Smith, any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed, thank you. Action item 13, approval of surplus buses.
This, we did some surplus not long ago, six buses. We held those an extra year because these buses are terrible. They are probably 30% of our maintenance. They have a motor that they don't even make anymore. They quit making them. And so we want, these are the six we need out of our fleet. And that's why we held others, just in case these didn't make it to this one. But they did. So now we're reading surplus, surplus these.
What happens to these surplus buses?
We take them to the auction company and they sell them for us. We, we average from $300 to $3,500 a piece for them.
Any other question? Do I hear a motion to approve surplus buses?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. White, do I hear a second? Second by Mr. Smith, any further discussion?
Yes.
All in favor? Five and none opposed. Section eight, board comments.
I have some board comments. I have it written down because I might cry, so I don't want to write it down. I mean, I don't want to mess up. But I'll try to do it without having to read it too. I just wanted to say that I'm very, very proud of our school system, proud of what we've, what we've always had and what we will continue to have. We have great employees. We have great students. And I've had a wonderful time being on the board. And it's been a very eye-opening experience, learning from the standpoint that I didn't have, you know, as a teacher before. So I've learned a lot, and I'm very appreciative of the opportunity. But over the last few months, we've been looking at homes. And there's a huge, as everyone sees, a boom in the housing market. And we just have a great opportunity to take advantage of. And we have purchased or put a contract on a home, and it is outside of my district. So I contacted Mr. Land of our attorney to see what I needed to do. And since it is out of my district, I would have to resign from the board since I will not be in the same voting precinct. I haven't technically moved yet, but I wanted to give the current board an opportunity to find a replacement board member before the next school year started, so that, you know, any decisions that need to be made. The summertime is, I know, is, you know, we have a little more time to think about things. So I wanted them to have a board member that would be here for the next school year. So effective tonight, this will be my last board meeting. I'm resigning as of today. And just wanted to thank everybody for the opportunity, and thank you everyone for their support. And I know, I'm sorry, I forgot my little notes here. I want to make sure I don't forget anything. That it's, you know, we've accomplished a lot in the short two and a half years. I was very proud to serve with the past board, and very proud to serve the current board. I've developed a lot of great friendships and professional relationships with colleagues. And I know that we will continue the successes and build on what we've started here. So thank you all for all you do, and I hope everyone has a great summer. I have a lot of packing to do. So if anybody knows where some packing boxes are, I need them. Stacy, do y'all have some stuff from coming in? But thank you again. I really appreciate everyone's support and friendship that I've developed with everyone here.
Well, I'd like to comment on your comment. I'd like to not accept her resignation, but I'm afraid I'm going to have to. But I want to thank you for all your hard work. It's been a joy to work with you. Your passion for students is just phenomenal. And your research capabilities have helped us a lot.
I don't know, the Brinsels might not appreciate all the articles I've always sent you.
But it's, it's been a joy. I've, I've not only gotten to work with you professionally, but I feel like I've made a friend as well. And I know that you're still going to be in the county, and you're still going to advocate for the students, and that's good. We appreciate all your efforts. Thank you.
Well, I want to thank Catherine for her service. And I don't know if I should say this with the media here, but there is a joke that we're board spouses. And so this is, I guess, a divorce proceeding as well. So I'm, I'm a little upset. I'm available again, I guess. But we're very sad to see Catherine.
She was already meeting to me earlier today. So it's a little easier. We're trying to make this breakup process smoother.
We hate to see Catherine go, but we wish her well. And I want to thank her for her service. But I want to take a moment to address where we go from now. And our local act requires that the remaining board members fill this vacancy. And the local act does not give us any guidance on how to handle the selection process. However, we have, I've had the chance to discuss the parameters with my fellow board members, and the process that we would like to follow that, that we think would be the best way to go forward. We want all the board members to participate in this process. And we want to fill the vacancy before the school year begins. Because of vacations of all of us that are planned, and GSBA meetings, and various things scheduled throughout the month of July, we would like to complete this process by the end of June. And so therefore, we will be taking applications effective immediately, and from any interested person that resides within District One. And we will accept those applications until June 19th at 5:00 p.m. It is our hope that we will make the selection on June 20th or sometime shortly thereafter. The, any interested person can provide their full legal name, their primary residency address, and a few other things we would like, basically a letter of intent and things of that nature. They can provide it here to the board office, or they can submit it to Dr. Wilson's administrative assistant, Martha Seakers, to her email. And again, we will accept those applications until June 19th at 5:00 p.m. And again, that is just our hope and desire to make this as fair, as open, as transparent, transparent as possible. And our hope that we can also fill this vacancy before the school year begins during this busy summer months. So that is, that is why the timeline is the way it is, and that is the process that we have came to. That release will go out following the board meeting, through social media, through our website, to all of the media. And we will make this as known as possible. But I want to, again, thank Catherine for her service. And please keep us in your thoughts and prayers as we go through this process to try and appoint someone to fill this vacancy for the best for our school system. So. Any other comments?
With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Smith, and for the last time, second by Mrs. White. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. We are adjourned at 6:46 p.m. Thank you all for being here. I hope everybody's having a great summer. Thank you.